I don't know.
He has a grandson next door to receive him in court, so he'll stop over a little later in time for the Johnson controls. So we're recording.
We are. Okay, welcome everyone. This is the evening of November 20th, 2017. This is a regular meeting of the Arlington City Council and it is 6:32 PM. We'll call the meeting to order. I'm Mayor Rich Nagel, I'll be presiding this evening. First is to pledge allegiance to the flag. Would you join me please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. A little different order of business tonight. On my left, I have the pleasure of introducing to you our new city administrator, Pat Melvin. And before we move on into the meeting, I would like to administer the oath of office to Pat. Let's use the flag as a record. Raise your hand please. I am Patrick Melvin.
I am Patrick Melvin.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
The Constitution of the State of Minnesota.
Constitution of the United -- of the State of Minnesota.
And the Charter of the City of Arlington.
And the Charter of the City of Arlington.
And to discharge faithfully the duties devolving upon me.
And to discharge faithfully the duties devolving upon me.
As city administrator of the City of Arlington.
As city administrator of the City of Arlington.
To the best of my judgment and ability.
To the best of my judgment and ability.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Congratulations, I think. Congratulations, I think. Pat, would you introduce your family? I know they're here and...
Honored to. So this is Declan. This is our... How old are you, Declan?
Six.
Six. This is our... He'll be three in February. This is Tegan. And then this is Tegan. She is?
Nine.
Nine. And my wonderful wife, who is supportive to the nth degree.
We don't get my age. I am younger.
That's my family. So yes, that's my family. And then, believe it or not, there's Jason sitting right next to her. My mother's maiden name was Femrite. And obviously Jason is Femrite, so... Somehow we're related. We don't know how, but you know, I've been on the job for about a week, week and a half. And to be honest with you, I've really enjoyed it. I've enjoyed the support that I've received from you guys as council members and I've enjoyed the relationships that... the new relationships that I've built. So I look forward to working with you and making the progression and development of Arlington a real priority. So thank you for the opportunity and I look forward to working with you future holds.
Thanks, Patrick. Nice to meet your family too.
If he comes home late, you'll know where he was.
What is your home spot?
Oh, you'll understand. Well, that's...
There you go.
There you go.
Tegan. Tegan. There was a band, I think. Tegan. So T-E-E-G-A-N. Tegan.
Okay. And you can just sign both and one of them is yours, one goes on your file.
Okay, wonderful.
All right.
Thank you. Thanks for coming.
Drive carefully now.
See you guys, thanks.
Bye-bye.
Bye-bye.
Okay, we'll have a roll call at this time. Councilmember Highland.
Yes.
Councilmember Callow.
Here.
Councilmember Hattlestead.
Here.
Councilmember Yashewski.
Here.
Councilmember Batchard.
Here.
All members are present. City Attorney Arnison will join us a little later. Also with us this evening, the audience, Chief of Police John Pedersen, Jason Femrite, representing Bolden and Mink, Holly Kreft, our EDA consultant, Kirk Mink, and then another gentleman, I'm not sure I...
Mike Weber.
Mike Weber. Okay, welcome. All right, we'll move then on after introductions, we'll move on to the consent agenda, the consent agenda this evening. I'm sorry, we must approve the agenda and agenda additions. Is there any changes or additions to the agenda? I do have one and that would be on page two, item number 12, that pay estimate number six, that has already been taken care of at the last council meeting. But in place of that, we will have discussion relating to the liquidated damages negotiation status with OMG. We'll take that item up at that time. That'd be item number 12. Are there any other changes or any other items for the agenda? If not, a motion is in order to approve?
I move to approve the agenda and with the additions and corrections.
I'll second that.
Motion by Councilmember Highland, second by Councilmember Yashewski to approve the agenda as amended. Any questions? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Agenda is approved. Move on to the consent agenda. Item five. The items in the consent agenda this evening are approval of the November 6 regular meeting minutes and the approval of the bills. Are there any questions in regard to those items? Not, a motion is in order to approve?
I move to approve the consent agenda.
Second. Motion by Councilmember Yashewski, second by Councilmember Highland to approve the consent agenda. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carried.
May I add?
Yes.
Last week or last meeting, we had in there employee updates and that's just tracking... I would like to see that back in there.
Sure.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, at this time, there are no public hearings. We would have the item six then, citizens addressing council. Are any citizens wishing to address the council this evening? Yes, would you come forward and use the microphone at the table, please? Identify yourself. And maybe your address.
I am Mike Weber. I live on 209 Fifth Avenue. And I have a question. How are the streets coming along with being swept?
Being swept?
Yes.
Uh-huh.
I'm sorry to tell you, Mike, I've been on the job such a short time, I don't know the answer to that question, but I'd be more than happy to look into that and get back to you with a phone call.
Well, the street has... In front of my house has not been touched.
Okay.
Since April or May this year.
Really?
And I see a street stripper going down a street that has 10 leaves to 20 feet. And there is about 1,000 leaves to 20 feet in my place. Now I see the wind taking, blowing leaves. Common sense is get the leaves that got... He says that got the most leaves before you get such a little ones. Because they're the ones that are taking the leaves below to where there aren't no leaves. So how many times are you gonna be sweeping that street? Three or four times and not even touching no big amount of leaves? That's kind of backwards.
Can you tell me what street you're on and I can make sure that we...
Fifth Avenue.
Fifth Avenue Northwest.
209 Fifth Avenue Northwest.
I have asked here, when I paid the water bill, it should be done by mid-November. Well, let's see, 15th is mid-November. And it still isn't done. And I see the guy taking, doing the rain in the alley. And I asked somebody, are you gonna take and get around to take and get in the street? Yeah, it should be done by Friday. Well, Friday's come and gone.
Okay.
So I don't know if I might... If... I don't know if you need to take and build a fire underneath the guy in charge of the streets or what. I don't know.
So you live on Highway 5, right? Is that Fifth Avenue?
That's Fifth Avenue. But you cannot call it Highway 5 because the street said... Sign says Fifth Avenue.
Okay.
So it's not highway responsibility.
Sure, it's in town.
And it should be the city's responsibility, plow right there between Chandler and Baker, I believe.
Brooks, probably, huh? Baker?
Baker. Between Chandler and Baker. That covers Chandler, Brooks, Alden, Adams, Main, and Baker. That should be plowed by the city right there because that's where the sign says Avenue and no Highway 5. It says fire this way when you're on Main Street to turn on 5. But it does not take you to 5 until you get outside city limits.
Okay, well, no doubt we'll look into that. Sounds like you're getting the runaround a little bit and that isn't right.
I am. And one of the biggest problems I have, and it's not yours, but it's the highways. When it snows and a pile comes through, they are going about 35, 40 miles an hour in a 30 mile an hour speed limit. How do I know that? Because they're taking, throwing the snow 15 feet from the blade. I know that because I'm an equipment operator. I've been operating equipments for a long time. I know that the snow pile, when it's going that fast, will throw that far.
Okay.
If they're going, they should be only going 20 miles an hour. Because that pile, if it hits something, it's gonna go into another car. And you're in the city street and the city limit, you have a tendency to hit a little kid playing on the sidewalk when you're throwing snow on top of the sidewalk and knocking him over. You're gonna hurt that kid one of these days. And that's gonna be on your conscience. That, to me, is considered hitting around because of that snow, let your blade so if you went out so far.
Okay, thank you very much for bringing these items to our attention.
Thanks, Mike.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to item seven, announcements. Go ahead. Yep.
Just wanted to notify the public that the city offices will be closed on Thursday, November 23rd, and Friday, November 24th, and observance of the Thanksgiving holiday. So if you're coming in to pay your water bill, please do so on Wednesday or Tuesday this week. The second announcement is that we are having a ribbon... ribbon cutting on Monday, November 27th at 4:30 to welcome Alice's Family Hair Center, which is located on 422 West Main Street. So if any of the council members are able to attend, you're definitely invited. Third item was to notify individuals that the Arla Dazzle Celebration, which is coming up on Saturday, December 2nd, currently has raffle tickets that are available for sale at City Hall. Correct me if I'm wrong, is it $25 a ticket or...
10.
10.
$10. Only $10 a ticket.
Only 10. So you're getting a bargain deal.
So you could buy two and a half tickets for $25.
That's right. And then the last announcement is that the city will be doing their truth and taxation meeting where we talk about the upcoming budget on December 4th at 6:00 PM. Individuals are invited to come and learn about where resident money is being spent to improve our community.
Okay. Thank you very much. Any questions in regard to the announcements? If not, we'll move on to communications. And we have the police report for the month and also the building permits issued. Is there any questions in regard to those two items?
Mr. Mayor, if there aren't any questions, we've got Police Chief Peterson here. Would you like to say a word or two at this time?
I was wondering, is he on? Yeah, go ahead, right now. It's gonna be fine. Great.
I'll be real quick, I promise. So we just wanted to give an update on the prospective new hire coming up, Sarah Jankowski. So she has been approved to go through the next step from her background that was passed. And then she has done her psychological and she just did her physical today. So I've gotten word that everything is a go and I guess I'd like from you guys permission to make the official December 4th could be a start date for her. So I'd like to throw that out there. She can't do it by December 2nd. I pushed, I tried.
Nice job.
So we can't pull her into the Arla Dazzle. So next topic then is the squad car that we had talked about getting repaired is in the shop right now. The catalytic converter's replaced and two new... Two new front snow tires are on it. So we should get that maybe tomorrow. The rifles are on order along with the handguns. Watch guard cameras have been ordered for the squad car. And the safes that we had talked about and discussed for the rifles in the police department for security purposes have been purchased and are installed. The guns are in there safely now. And then I just wanted to bring up the topic, we've kind of thrown out a shift change request for the officers. So once I get Sarah in place, I'd like to see us consider a 10-hour shift change. We're doing 12 hours per day right now. And city administrator and I have sat down and kind of had a little discussion. Police committee have kind of knocked it around a little bit too. And we're just trying to... I'll try and get some more information together and provide it to the council with more specifics on it. But the gist of it, it's looking like if we can do a 10-hour shift, we will have more coverage throughout the year, which more days of work and probably less overtime being having to pay it out, which would be in exchange for maybe two hours... Four hours, I'm sorry, per weekend of on-call time. But we would see a squad car moving around the city a lot more often. The best part of that in my eyes is we would see from each officer, two extra days of work per month. So that would give me four extra days of coverage that I would be able to implement wherever we kind of need it. Or we could give some relief for vacation or time off stuff too. So I throw that out there just as a hopeful progressive moving forward as well. Pat, anything else?
No, I appreciate John, he's coming forth with some ideas and some suggestions for improvement, so thank you for bringing that up. And yeah, we would like to take a look at what we're currently incurring in terms of working with Sibley County and how they sometimes back us up and see if we can do that more efficiently and effectively.
One other thing that we're called, the Arla Dazzle Parade. So we've made some requests for some agency assisting. Gaylord PD and Henderson PD have also offered to come up and help. And they will follow our ordinance requests and my guidance for whatever extra coverage we would need for the evening. So I appreciated their offering as well.
Good. Good. How many... Let's see, how often is the county coming in now and covering currently and how will that change when Sarah comes on?
So right now, what we're seeing is anytime that Scott's not working, which would be a night shift, 3:00 PM to 3:00 AM, we're getting coverage by the county.
Okay.
So whether there's calls on actually those days or not would depend on the coverage that we're getting. I don't think they're spending much time here unless there's a call for service.
Hmm, okay.
So I can't give you any solid numbers for hours that we've had, but... And the past year is gonna be very skewed as well, just because we've been down on numbers of officers anyways.
Okay.
So we would see two, at least five days a week that... Every other week, I guess, that county would be taking our calls. And that should be eliminated once we get Sarah gone.
Okay. And that period of time between 3:00 in the morning and 7:00, 7:30 in the morning would still... There wouldn't be any coverage during that period of time, is that right?
Correct. That's where we would have some of the on-call time. That would be at $2 an hour instead of the full... What do I want to say? The full officer price or deputy on call... Or deputy responding to calls.
Okay.
May I...
Yes.
As a chief of question, if you're gonna go down to 10-hour days, are you gonna stagger the times, start and stop times or...
Those extra days that I'll be able to get, yes. I'll be able to bring officers in and move things around. If any of you saw on social media this weekend, we had some thefts that occurred shortly after Scott went home. And I think there's some relative information that's out to people, knowing when we come and when we go. So yes, I'd like to adjust some of those times, either on the front and on the back, so we kind of mix things up a little bit.
Good.
So I think it'll be very beneficial for many reasons for that.
Okay. Any other questions on the chief? Thank you.
Thanks.
Thanks.
All right. Building permit report for your information there. Assume there's no questions on that. We will move on to item nine, ordinances. Second reading of ordinance number 316. Again, these ordinances, 316, 317, 318 are all somewhat related. Brought to the council by recommendation of planning and zoning and just some... Basically some changes in the zoning order or zoning classifications in areas. Questions or... Councilmember Batchard is the council's delegate, so to speak.
She is the expert.
She is the expert, so if you'd want to direct any questions on these to her.
I had some items that I was kind of concerned about on the zoning map. And Councilmember Batchard took me by the hand and pointed out the changes and I even understood them. So from going from a no vote, I'm up to about a maybe right now.
I believe this first ordinance, 316, is talking about the changes in language, how we describe the different zones and such. So with that, I'll make a motion to...
These do not have to... Any... No action on these because they will get action in the resolutions down below, so just for discussion at this time. And then if we move on to ordinance 317, that would talk about R21. It's just adding a R2 district, is that correct?
Yes.
That has not been...
Yeah.
Has not been there before. One and two-family residence district. And then item C, ordinance 318, it's amending section four relating to the official zoning maps. So in other words, putting everything that is in ordinance 316 and 317 and changing the official zoning map accordingly. Okay, any questions on the ordinances? If not, that will be considered the second reading.
I have one question on 317. Subdivision two, paragraph G, number one, partway down, it prohibits commercial vehicles shall automatically be considered included, but not limited to any trucks rated over two tons or heavier in any semi... Any tractor-trailer units. And one commercial motor vehicle of not more than 32 feet length used by a resident occupant may be parked on the premises or a public street bordering the premise. So that's a... No two-ton trucks can be in the residential area, is that what? Am I reading that right? Prohibited vehicles shall be considered to include two-ton trucks or heavier. But one commercial vehicle not over 32 feet in length used by the resident may be parked on the premise or on the street bordering the premise. 32-foot truck is a pretty big truck.
Yep.
So I think it reflects what's in the R1 district already, the R2? If I'm not mistaken. I don't believe that's something that we changed in the R1.
Okay, that's R2.
That had been in the R1. So we're just adding R2 to cover those? Have the same kind of parameters?
I think it might be what they're taking, trying to say there with the footage is a mobile home type vehicle, like a rental bagel.
Motor home.
Well, I mean if... As well as, let's say somebody does lawn care as a business, right? They could probably park their truck and their trailer in front of their home as well, right? That would...
Right. Most of those trucks are like one-ton, half-ton, three-quarter-ton pickups with a trailer. You know, 32-foot truck could be like a moving van. Big U-Haul. I don't see anything in the R... Or the 316 is...
That's R1.
R1. They don't talk about vehicles that I see.
That's something maybe Councilmember Batchard could bring to the planning and zoning to see if that is supposed to be addressed in both those zones.
Right. If it's gonna be in a R2, I would think it for sure should be in a R1.
Right. Scanning that.
Okay, well, is this something we can move along with and you can either... If it is omitted from one and if it's supposed to be in both, that's something that the planning and zoning would have to clarify and bring back any of, so...
Well...
Keep the meeting moving.
I... Well, this is what I'm wondering, so 316 is more definitions to the terminology used in the other, in the ordinances. And I believe 317 is talking about R1 and R2.
It is covering both?
Yes. I just wanted to clarify before I spoke out. But that's what I read.
Okay.
So 316 is definitions of terminology? And then this is section... Under one, section 5, five, R2, one, and okay, R2, one and two-family residence. So we're not... So nothing is said in here about R1. R1, we can probably find in a different area. So this is just the new R2. So I guess what I'm going with is what I said before, so I'm... So, I guess what I'm going with is what I said, Pete, for, so I'm sure that the same terminology. This might be a little bit looser than the R one. But this is just referring to the R, R two. Um, three sixteen ordinance is referring just to terminology used. And then three eighteen is the actual map.
Okay. Satisfied for now, Mr. Highland?
Sort of, yes.
Sort of, yes. Okay, this, uh, then will be considered the second reading of ordinance number three sixteen, three seventeen, and three eighteen, and we'll move on to resolutions. Uh, first resolution is seventy-nine dash twenty seventeen, relating to designing, designating, designing, designating polling place locations for all elections in twenty eighteen. And of course, it would be the community center for all elections to be held in twenty eighteen.
I'll introduce resolution seventy-nine, twenty seventeen, resolution relating to the designating polling place location for all elections in twenty eighteen.
Second.
Okay, resolution seventy-nine dash twenty seventeen was introduced by councilmember Batchelor, second by councilmember Highland, and that is a resolution relating to designating polling place location for all elections in twenty eighteen. Any questions on the resolution? Will vote by roll call, vote? Councilmember Hattlested?
Yes.
Councilmember Cowell?
Yes.
Councilmember Yashewski?
Yes.
Councilmember Batchelor?
Yes.
Councilmember Highland?
Yes.
All in favor, none opposed, the resolution is adopted. Next one is, um, a resolution authorizing Sibley County conduct a mill and overlay on County State Aid Highway seventeen from Main Street to the railroad tracks in the city of Arlington. Everyone clear on where that is? Four-way, four-way stop north towards, to the railroad. And that overlay would take place then next year.
And then, when is that bridge reconstruct supposed to be taken?
Bridge is scheduled for twenty or twenty-one, I believe, it's.
Okay, so far out there?
Well, a few years down the road yet from this.
One thing that, um, I would like to see us look into, if they're, um, gonna be milling and overlay whatever down, uh, north of Main Street to the bridge, is that I believe it's East Brooks, that at seventeen to the east, that where that road, um, where East Brooks comes up to seventeen, there is a huge bumper to get up onto seventeen. Can we look at that?
Mean right at the intersection?
Right there, yes.
Yeah, I would, I would hope that the milling would take care of that, but.
Well, I, if we need to do a little something.
So, the intersection of seventeen and Brook Street, East Brook Street.
Yeah, on the east side of the road, if we would have to do something about that, I would, Streets Committee.
This is at the corner with the big brick house there, right?
Correct, yeah.
Yeah, okay. Okay, duly noted.
I will say that the, uh, Sibley County engineer did contact us, and, uh, I did talk with Jason, and, uh, he informed me that we don't have any projects occurring in that area, obviously with the intended purpose of not having Sibley County do something, and then have the city turn around and have to do further construction in that area, so, nothing is slated.
But I mean, if, yeah, if there's, if there's an issue there, and I know there's an issue there right now, if that can, I mean, if we have to put a little bit of something into it to kinda match that up a little bit better, since they're there.
I can certainly, uh, talk with, uh, Sibley County engineer about that.
And I don't know if it's, I know it's on the east side for sure, but I don't know if it's on the west side of Brooks right there, too.
So, where Brooks is coming in from both sides to check?
Check both sides, maybe.
Okay. All right, is there a motion to introduce that resolution, then?
Make, um, uh, introduce resolution eighty dash twenty seventeen, authorizing Sibley County to conduct mill overlay on, uh, County Road seventeen from Main Street to the railroad tracks in the city of Arlington in two thousand eighteen.
I'll second it.
Resolution eighty dash seventeen, twenty seventeen is introduced by councilmember Highland, second by councilmember Hattlested. That resolution again is authorizing Sibley County to conduct mill and overlay on County State Aid Highway seventeen from Main Street to the railroad tracks in the city of Arlington in twenty eighteen. Is there any questions on the resolution? If not, we'll vote by roll call, vote. Councilmember Highland?
Yes.
Councilmember Hattlested?
Yes.
Councilmember Cowell?
Yes.
Councilmember Yashewski?
Yes.
Councilmember Batchelor?
Yes.
All in favor, none opposed, the resolution is adopted. Uh, resolution eighty-one dash twenty seventeen, a resolution approving terms of loan to Grand K LLC from the Arlington EDA facade improvement loan program for a project at two oh nine Main Street West.
So, we have a facade program running through the EDA, and that, um, is a matching loan, a forgivable loan, after about a year, um, to the facades on Main Street in the CBD. Um, this was not a business per se, uh, but it is improving the, the, um, look at the property on Main Street. We recommended that we go for it.
Just to clarify, where is, exactly?
Um, it would be right, uh, two, two, to the west from Moriums, so the blue-sided, siding, sided building.
I know one of the residents in there is all excited about what they're doing.
On the inside as well, yeah.
Yeah, no, they're doing.
They've been putting a lot of money into the property, on the inside and now on the outside.
Very good improvement for Main Street.
Yes, yes, yes. We have to introduce the resolution first, right?
Are you?
No.
I will. Resolution eighty-one, twenty seventeen, approving terms of a loan to Grand K LLC from the Arlington EDA facade improvement loan program for a project at two oh nine West Main Street.
I will second that.
Resolution was introduced by councilmember Batchelor, second by councilmember Hattlested, that is resolution number eighty-one, twenty, dash, twenty seventeen, a resolution approving terms of a loan to Grand K LLC from the Arlington EDA facade improvement loan program for a project at two oh nine Main Street West. Any questions in regard to the resolution? If not, vote by roll call, councilmember Batchelor?
Yes.
Councilmember Yashewski?
Yes.
Councilmember Hattlested?
Yes.
Councilmember Cowell?
Yes.
Councilmember Highland?
Yes, yes.
All in favor, none opposed, the resolution is adopted. Moving on to resolution eighty-two dash twenty seventeen, um, that is relating to ordinance three sixteen above, the one that the second reading was just held on. And, uh, this also approves of the ordinance change, and also authorizes summary publication of that ordinance.
Can we put them all together and vote, or do they need to be?
They need to be separate.
They're different.
They are, they are separate, so they need to be separate, I guess, yeah, because they are
They're different.
Different.
They're all different.
Yep.
I'll introduce resolution, um, eighty-two, twenty seventeen, as it reads.
Come on!
Yeah, that's weird, yeah, I'm not even gonna repeat that one. How can I repeat it if you don't say it in the first place?
I will second it as it reads.
That's almost like a tongue twister.
Right.
Okay, resolution eighty-two dash twenty seventeen was introduced by councilmember Batchelor, second by councilmember Hattlested, the description of which is in front of you, um, relating to the, uh, ordinance number three sixteen. Any questions on the resolution? If not, we'll vote by roll call, councilmember Cowell?
Yes.
Councilmember Batchelor?
Yes.
Councilmember Hattlested?
Yes.
Councilmember Highland?
Yes.
Councilmember Yashewski?
Yes.
All in favor, none opposed, resolution is adopted. Resolution eighty-three dash twenty seventeen, approving ordinance three seventeen.
I'll introduce resolution eighty-three, twenty seventeen, approving ordinance three seventeen entitled, and ordinance amending ordinance one sixty-nine, the Arlington zoning ordinance, by adding section five point five, creating the R two, one, and two-family resident district, and authorize summary, summary publication thereof.
Second.
The resolution was introduced by councilmember Highland, uh, that is resolution eighty-three dash twenty seventeen, second by councilmember Cowell, and the description was read by councilmember Highland. Is there any questions in regard to the resolution? Hearing none, vote by roll call, vote. Councilmember Yashewski?
Yes.
Councilmember Cowell?
Yes.
Councilmember Highland?
Yes.
Councilmember Hattlested?
Yes.
Councilmember Batchelor?
Yes.
All in favor, none opposed, resolution is adopted. Then lastly, resolution eighty-four dash twenty seventeen, which approves ordinance three eighteen.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve resolution, resolution eighty-four, two seven, two thousand seventeen, as written.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, the resolution was introduced by councilmember Yashewski, second by councilmember Batchelor, that is resolution eighty-four dash twenty seventeen, a resolution approving ordinance three eighteen, entitled an ordinance amending section four subdivision one of ordinance one sixty-nine, the Arlington zoning ordinance, relating to the official zoning map for the city of Arlington, and authorizing summary publication thereof. Any questions in regard to the resolution? Hearing none, vote by roll call, vote. Councilmember Highland?
Yes.
Councilmember Batchelor?
Yes.
Councilmember Yashewski?
Yes.
Councilmember Cowell?
Yes.
Councilmember Hattlested?
Yes.
All in favor, none opposed, the resolution is adopted. All right, moving on to unfinished business, uh, the first item is regarding the EDA services going forward, uh, beginning January first of twenty eighteen. We had a special meeting on this, uh, for discussion purposes only, at five-thirty this evening, and, um, I would open it up for comment at this point, uh, to whatever degree the council feels would be appropriate.
I would be willing to make a motion if we get that far, or if we are that far.
Okay.
I, I would like to see us, um, find out exactly what, um, services we're receiving right now from the county, and have that laid out, and also, um, look at our goals from the EDA, and have those laid out to separate, keeping them as separate as possible, although overlay is going to happen, I know, um, so that, um, we do not lose the services that we already get from, um, Amy Newsom with the county, um, and then be able to add on to it, um, by, by purchasing some, um, contracted hours, just for the city of Arlington, if we can try and find some language between, um, the county and, and us to make sure that we don't lose, lose anything that we're already receiving, and that we can add to it. I'd be willing to look at that, have somebody look at that.
Seems like the, um, amount, go ahead, oh.
No, I see.
Okay, uh, the amount of time that, uh, the, the council seemed to be tossing around was, uh, six, seven, eight hours a week, whatever, that would fit within the budget for twenty eighteen. So, any other comments? Pat, did you wanna, you have any outlines of?
I, I just think with the current economy, I've had some discussions with, uh, Holly Craft and, uh, Amy Newsom as well, and with the current economy, I think that, uh, Arlington is in a good situation in terms of having rail line and, and location where that, uh, we should be doing something. Oftentimes, people think that, uh, uh, economic development is really, you know, what you put into it, but in all reality, a big part of it is luck, and I think if we just continue to, uh, make forward strides, not, you know, going crazy, but as long as we continue to, uh, move forward, I think it's just a matter of time before businesses start to realize what, uh, wonderful opportunities exist here in, in Arlington. So, uh, I think that, uh, we can accomplish a lot by doing, uh, a combination of maybe working with Sibley County, but also having some, uh, internal staff step up and, and take on some of that workload in terms of creating a, a good relationship, and listening to businesses, and, and bringing some of their issues, uh, up in meetings and in discussions that are occurring, so, I think it's a, a wonderful solution where we're not going overboard, uh, but we're, we're putting our, our toe into the water, and we'll be able to see what comes from that in six months to a year, so.
The other thing that, um, concerns me is, is the length of the term. I know the first time that the company came, they wanted a three-year contract, and, um, I don't think I'm okay with that. I think a year would be enough with option to potentially renew, um, or to renew. Is the other part that I would like to consider in, in our contract, if, if we were to address something.
I know, they probably won't go anything less than a year, but I think after six months, we'll, we'll have a good feel where we're at. Good, bad, or indifferent, and I'm, I'm with you, Michelle, I, I'm uncomfortable even with a two-year commitment. Right, the three-year can come after the one-year, but one-year is enough at first, I think. Yeah. And I think if things are going well, we could also have the option to renew for, you know, one or two years, whatever we feel comfortable with, and how things are working out for Sibley County, for Amy, and for us. And, um, I think before we pull the trigger on it, we need to get, get a better definition on the hours and time and stuff like that. So, is that the plan to meet with Sibley County and?
Yeah, I think that we talked about
Yeah.
getting a, uh, a more structured agreement put together, bringing that to the, uh, one of the meetings in December. And, uh, at the same time inviting Amy and, uh, city, or county administrator Traxler to the meeting, one or the other, or both. Amy for sure, I would say, she's the one that's gonna be doing the work.
So, you think we can have that put together by the next council meeting, or?
We can, we can certainly try, we'll see what schedules allow, but that'll be our goal.
Yep.
Councilmember Hattlested, you had indicated you had a motion ready.
My, my emotion would be exactly what we discussed in the special meeting, and what we discussed right here.
Okay.
To have administrator Melvin and Mr. Traxler and Amy Newsom sit down and work out all the agreements that we would like to see, and
Okay.
then come back to the city council.
Okay, I'll let you, do you need any more definition of the motion than that?
Nope, I understand where you're coming from.
I think the correct of it is to move, move forward, uh, in the direction of, um, contracting with Sibley County for a certain number of hours to be determined, uh, if all our concerns can be met. And, uh, that would be brought back then, at hopefully the first council meeting in December, if not the second.
That's a long motion, but I would second that.
Yeah.
I was just wondering if it's just a consensus thing, or if we need a motion?
I think it could be done by consensus.
Okay, then I consensus that.
And I would just add, thank, uh, Holly for her, her efforts and, and, and time working with the city on those economic developments, so, thank you.
Okay, let the minutes read, then, that is a consensus of the city council, that will move forward towards, uh, negotiations with the county on, uh, services of an EDA director, with details to be worked out at a December meeting, council meeting. Okay, any more points on that? If not, we'll move on to item twelve, discussion relating to liquidated damages negotiation status. Jason Pembright, how are you this evening?
Very good.
Welcome.
Thank you very much. Since our last meeting-
Since our last meeting, I did provide a letter update to OMG regarding your guys' direction on liquidated damages and essentially the twenty-three days at eleven thousand five hundred. After I had sent that letter, we received a letter back from the contractor on November eighth, and their counter offer was thirteen days at sixty-five hundred dollars. Just kind of looking at where we started, we started at eighteen-five, and they were at thirty-five, eleven-five, they were at sixty-five. So we're kind of in the middle, about five thousand dollars apart, and looking for some direction from the council on where you would like to go with this. I did provide, and I think that is in your packet, the final resolution and disputes that are included in the general conditions of the contract.
Is it typical for a company to come back and negotiate liquidated damages?
I would say yes. Disputing, you know, some of the hardships that they may be encountered and outlining some of those. I wouldn't say that this is uncommon.
Right, but generally from our discussions before, you would have heard, you would have known their concerns beforehand, correct? I mean, they didn't communicate with us until, until, you know, we went with the contract. The contract said, you know, five hundred dollars a day, and then all of a sudden, there was some, you know, concerns, the contract, they had to start late, you know, the alley, you know, all that stuff was known, you know, in my opinion. You know, they could have said anytime throughout the whole project that they were going to be delayed, and we, I guess I didn't hear anything, and it didn't sound like you had.
No, I mean, they, you know, and they kind of outlined that, that they did provide some updates, and that was updates on when crews were going to be there to do some specific work. It's not like they were talking about when they were going to get completed, it was just merely weekly updates on kind of what they were doing and what we could expect. And I know our RPR, Rob Pizza was out there, was, you know, spent significant time communicating with them when they're going to be there, and that fluctuated significantly and caused some frustration on his behalf, just, you know, trying to keep track of when they're going to be there and who's going to be there. And so, there was scheduled communications, not formal, you know, when we're going to meet substantial completions or anything like that.
I'm not happy with their response either. They're talking like they're not responsible, and at least the communication, they can't do that. They're not, I'm disappointed.
Well, we already reduced the liquidated damages from thirty-seven down to twenty-three days, and I don't feel that we should reduce it anymore.
Right. I thought we were very generous in what we did.
I thought we were.
In fact, I'd even voted against it because I thought it was too much, and to drop it down more, I mean, they'll keep coming back and want to drop more and more till it's maybe a little slap on the finger, sort of amounts to.
Well, I, number one, we wanted that project done before school started this year, and that did not happen, and they knew our firm deadline, but they did not come to us saying that they were having issues going to be completing this. So, that's what these things are set and are put in place in contracts for. And without the communication, I'm firm at sticking with our twenty-three days that it already got reduced to.
What good is the contract?
Correct.
Okay, it looks like we have three council members shaking their heads in agreement. How about the other two? Mr. Highland?
I think I'd look for some direction from Mr. Felmerite as to what industry standards would be.
It's a business decision, and compromises happen. Nobody's, if we go into, and I'm just going to throw it out there, if we go into mediation, neither side's going to win. We're going to probably more than likely split it in the middle. I mean, I could ask that question to our city attorney, but nobody wins, and it's not going to be fun for either, and there's going to be some costs involved in that, and I don't know how that'll end up. I'm just speculating on that, just based on past times when we have entered those disputes. They think that they, you know, are entitled to some extra time. We don't think that they are. Who's right, the mediator would decide that, and where do we end up? You know, I don't know, maybe somewhere in the middle, it comes down to a business decision.
Ross, could you shed some light on that process?
Well, first of all, I think on their end, this letter was a product of their discussing it and deciding, well, let's see if we can get the city to split the difference once more, you know? And if we take a firm stance back again, they might fold. And, you know, if they don't, I guess we can continue to discuss it with them. But I guess my recommendation would be to tell them no. I think that's a sense of the council that we feel we've given them a fair offer. If they're not accepting of it, well, let's go to mediation, but by the way, we'll go back up to the original penalty, you know, as a starting point. And so then if mediator were to split the difference, we're probably still going to be ahead of, you know, where they want us to be in this counter offer, I guess.
What, tell us about the mediation process, how lengthy is it, where does it take place, how much time involved?
Well, something like this, I don't think it'd take very long, maybe half a day. And both sides typically split the cost of the mediator, and they typically get, you know, a fair hourly rate, you know, two, three hundred bucks, but then they, well, you know, if we choose a good one, they'll work very efficiently, and it shouldn't drag on. Have you been on any mediations?
Personally, I have not.
Oh, okay. Well, I have, not in this context, but in both of the mediations that I was in, there were retired judges who had, did this as a second career, and if you choose the right mediator, again, they'll work very efficiently, they charge a high hourly rate, but then they get done pretty quick. So.
And as far as where it would take place, who decides that?
Well, it's something that usually is a mutual decision of both sides. You can require it be somewhere that's convenient, you know, for the city as well as the contractor. You know, meet somewhere halfway, or.
Okay.
Although in this context, they're not that far away, maybe ask them to come here.
Okay.
You know, and I guess, you know, just looking to the future, hopefully this particular situation won't occur again, but if it does, maybe it's not bad for the city to have the reputation of holding a hard line and being willing to go to mediation. Of course, on the third hand, Michelle, on the third hand, I guess, you know, we don't want to get a bad reputation of being unreasonable, you know, in the contractor community, but I think in a situation like this, you know, we have a good reason to take a hard line. And of course, from the contractor's viewpoint, you know, are they going to refuse to bid on future city projects? No.
Yeah, and plus, it did come down, I mean, it's not that we weren't completely unreasonable.
No, and, I mean, we came down, what, fifteen days?
Yeah, fourteen.
Fourteen days from what it was? And if they would have had communication with us in the process that things weren't going right, that this is going to drag out a little bit longer than we had hoped, I would have given more days. But that wasn't the case.
Right.
I mean, I think they had their, you know, different priorities, and we were not their top priority to get done.
Let's go back with the eleven thousand dollars.
Okay, do we need a motion on that, or just consensus again? Just to stick with our eleven, we're not moving off of that.
Eleven-five.
Eleven-five, yes.
Confirmation that that's our, the city council's final, final offer on this, and yeah, I'd be happy to pass that along to them.
I would, I'll make a motion actually to.
Let's do it in a motion this time, if we're going to stick on that.
I would like to make a motion to stick with our twenty-three days for liquid.
Twenty-three days, yeah, for eleven thousand five hundred.
For eleven thousand five hundred dollars for liquidated damages.
Final offer, right.
Final offer, and then if I may add, go with Ms., our Attorney Artis' suggestion that if they want to mediate, we take our thirty, twenty-three days off and go back up to thirty-seven, just so that's.
Should that be part of the motion?
Should it?
I don't know.
Well, I think it's, it'd be useful, I think, to point that out to them.
Yeah.
Okay.
I, yeah.
Okay.
Because in these negotiations, sometimes.
This is our final offer, take this or leave it, otherwise we're back to where we're square one.
Back to eighteen, eighteen-five.
Like in Craft, that language, yes.
Okay.
Yeah, efficiency.
I'll second it.
Okay.
Your initial argument was excellent.
Thank you.
Okay, motion by Councilmember Batchor, second by Councilmember Yashewski to, for the council to hold firm in our offer for liquidated damages at eleven five, eleven thousand five hundred, indicating to the contractor that if mediation is sought, the council's offer will then revert back to the eighteen thousand five hundred. Any discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carried unanimously. All right, thank you, Jason.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming, Jason.
Moving up to item thirteen, Johnson Controls update.
Counsel, you come up with two items of information, one of which was what would the quote be from our legal consultant to make a demand of Johnson Controls? And he had quoted four hundred and fifty dollars. And that's more than just, you know, writing a one-page letter, you know, he would give them a legal analysis and an argument as to why they should help us out with a new streetlight system. The second item of information was to determine how many streetlights are actually not functioning at the present time, and Street Superintendent Wecworth did a survey and came up with seven lights. This is up two from when previous Street Superintendent left. His last survey was five lights, so in the time since he left, two more have failed. But in the grand scheme of things, you know, as we've discussed, seven lights not working in the system doesn't really give us a very strong basis for either mediation or, you know, lawsuit. The replacement components that we've gotten over the years seem to be somewhat holding up. So, I guess right now what we have is a bad taste in our mouth and a lot of irritation from a lot of, you know, wasted time and effort, you know, over the years fighting this system. But, you know, as far as going into court on it, you know, it's probably not worth it. But I guess my recommendation is to authorize Sean Mickelson to hit Johnson Controls with a demand for another four hundred and fifty bucks. That's about the equivalent of one and a half lights, so, based on our quotes, so.
That's what the city's cost would be to have him do that four fifty?
Yeah.
That's today, there are seven lights not working, but how much of a problem has it been over the years? How many had to be replaced each year and?
Well, it was up to like fifteen at one point, I think, in that range, and it was always in the winter, you know, when the cold weather would hit. But up until recently, when the subcontractor, the supplier stopped, you know, filling our replacement orders, up until that time, they were sending us replacements. When the replacements were installed, they seemed to be holding up. And since, well, Tony Void's survey was actually two winters ago, you know, and it was at five, and since that time, we've only picked up two more failures. So, I guess, I may be wrong, but, you know, just based on that experience, we wouldn't anticipate massive failures this winter. That'd be kind of weird, but.
Okay.
So what would, what would he ask, what would he be asking for in this letter?
Well, we had quoted them about two hundred and twenty thousand dollars to replace the present system, and I guess, I'll discuss that with them, but our approach up to this point was to ask them for the two hundred and twenty thousand dollars and wait for a counter offer, and hopefully they'll throw some money our way. I guess that's what we're looking for, you know, just to maintain their reputation if nothing else, so.
That might be tarnished already.
It could be somewhat. Glencoe had a system, but it was a little different than ours. Did you have any feedback from Glencoe about their experience?
I'm not aware of any, but I could certainly.
Well, I did, we did.
Oh, you did?
Inquire, yeah.
Okay.
And they had, they had a different type of light, and so it didn't really pertain to ours. Apparently, they didn't have nearly the problem we did, they had a different supplier, so.
Well, I'd say we move ahead with it, I mean, it's only going to cost us a light and a half to have them throw that letter out there.
And we already spent.
And we already, yeah, we're already in a little bit, not a lot, but.
Right.
Any kind of concession that we would get out of that letter would be great.
And, you know, over the years, the repair and paying, paying our people to do that and shipping back and forth, it all adds up, it sounds trivial now, but when you get a grand total, I'm sure that's a few thousand dollars.
Yeah, more or more.
And that's our justification for making a demand, really.
Well, they sold us a product that was not good for cold weather, so, I mean.
Until it was.
And told us it was, so the bottom line is, is that they sold us the wrong kind of system. Period. So, in my eyes, they're at fault, now if they look at the same way or not, probably not, but hopefully they'll do something.
Okay. Everyone in agreement, or do you want a motion on that?
Yeah, I got mixed emotions on it too, you know, do we, do we cut bait and go home? Or do we keep throwing more bait after the fish that's not biting?
I think we could always do, authorize them to send the letter for the four fifty, sit back, we don't have to make a decision on it, I mean.
No, we'd be waiting for the response.
We can wait and respond from the correspondence from Johnson Controls to, was it Mr. Mickelson? And then see what we want to do.
Right, right.
I don't, I just don't see a big recovery in the end. I mean, I think if they sold us a system that wasn't built for cold weather, in my mind, there's no ifs, ands, or buts, they're liable, but that's my mind, not the court's mind.
Right.
And I don't think we can, we can't afford to go to court for five, or seven, or ten, or twenty lights.
No, not, that's going to cost us more than the value of the lights.
Oh, right, right, yeah.
So, hopefully Johnson Controls will.
Try the letter and, like you say, sit back and leave the driving to the smile.
Want a motion or consensus?
It's driven us down pretty hard over, over the years, lots of years, it's time to let it, either get a result from that effort or call it quits.
I'll make a motion to send the letter for the four hundred and fifty dollars.
I'll second it.
Motion by Councilmember Cowell, second by Councilmember Hattlested to, for the city council authorizing a letter be sent by Attorney Mickelson to Johnson Controls in an attempt to reach some type of settlement. Any more discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carried. Okay, New Business Economic Development Committee report. Holly Kraft, welcome, Holly.
Welcome, thank you, Mayor and Council. Um, so you have reported three items that went to the last CBA meeting. The first one was a discussion regarding the former TSE building, and, um, as you know, the city's owned it for over a year now. And unfortunately, we haven't had anyone, we have had people look at it, but we haven't had any serious offers on it. So, EDA did recommend that we, um, contact local realtor Bruce Pinsky on the April, um, to list the building.
Bill Pinsky, I'm sorry. Bill Pinsky?
Yes.
You said Bruce.
Oh, the, the gentleman.
Oh, that's.
Yeah, sorry.
It's Bill.
It is, yes. Um, and, uh, recommend a listing price for that, so.
Yeah. Have you, um, contacted Leah or Bill to see if they're interested in listing the building?
Not at this time because I didn't, I wanted direction from the council first. But we have met with Leah before and she has toured the building, so I think she would be interested in.
Okay, my reservations on, on both realtors, um. Now, I haven't checked with Bill lately, but a while back, when I was looking to sell my building, I told him, well, I just got some for sale signs out, and he says, well, that's probably your best shot, just to do that. He wasn't interested in listing it. I had Leah list my building, the listing just expired last month, on the twenty-fifth. She had a problem listing commercial vehicle, commercial vehicle, commercial properties on her realtor website. They didn't wanna list, for some reason, it wasn't listing it. So I was frustrated, the fact that if somebody drove by, saw her sign with her website on it, and they went to that website, they couldn't find my listing. And, um, and I don't know that, and I'm maybe speaking out of turn here, but I don't know that Bill Pinsky does MLS listings on his properties. You know, we can check with him, you know, obviously, putting a sign out front may help. We could put a sign out front. Um, but I don't think we'd want the city employees being realtors showing the building, and, I mean, they can. Um, and I haven't checked into it, but perhaps, I don't know, if Fahey's, they say they're do commercial, or somebody like Edina Realty or Calhoun Realty that specialize in commercial property. I'm not trying to take anything away from our local realtors, um, but if they don't have the tools and equipment to get the building out there, um, I think we're wasting everybody's time, and I don't wanna do that. And I, I, I think we need to have somebody that can get the building out of the local area and out into the websites, the internets, the, you know, wherever people look for commercial, commercial properties. And I think we'll get our biggest bang for the buck if we get somebody looking for a property that's not necessarily from the area that. Cause the property's gonna be very inexpensive for the amount of square footage that's there. If it was twenty miles closer to the cities, it'd be a five hundred thousand dollar building.
And the EDA did discuss, um, using local realtors, obviously because they have that local knowledge, but did also discuss Fahey Realty, that's an option as well, um, given their commercial background. So, if the council is okay with it, I would be happy to contact, um, Bill and Leah first. That's the direction, um, to see if they are interested.
So how does it work with doing, we're doing EDA ones, uh, uh, Proll and Pinsky? So that's multiple listings right there. What about throwing a third one in, like Councilmember, um, Highland suggested, right away?
So, um, Bill and Leah work together on joint listing sometimes because, um, Bill has the local knowledge, but Leah has the MLS, so you'll sometimes see them work together. I don't know whether or not they would have a relationship like that with Fahey. Um, are you saying, or having Fahey listed separately? And then we'd have to determine the asking price, too, would be the other.
Well, I don't think that we can determine the asking price. I don't think that, that's not, I, I don't have that skill set in my back pocket. Um, that's something for, for a realtor to, to come up with.
On, on the sale price?
Right. I mean, honestly, um, I believe, um, Pinsky and Proll came up with the original price that we're asking right now.
Hmm, that was worked off of the, um, appraisal that was done. That was a council decision, I believe. Starting with the.
No.
Nope?
Yeah, no, I, I, I think technical services, their appraisal, uh, for their, their donation deduction.
Yes.
And I think we were working off of that.
Off of that.
That was really high.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And then Bill and Leah came in and they said, oh, no, for us, it, I think this is more where it should be. So, I mean, that's something that I'm not comfortable with, is trying to come up with a number for a building. I'm just not comfortable with that. Although, I mean, we had talked, um, about lowering the price and lowering the price, and that's something that never happened either over the last year, if there was no takers, no this, no that. Um, but, you know, I, I do believe that throwing it out there more and more on a, uh, commercial website or realtor is probably more of a, more of a better bet than going local with residential.
Right, I, I agree.
With residential listings.
I, I agree too. I mean, I'm just on the website here and I can't find any commercial listings on, well, Leah's website.
So, Councilmember Highland, let me answer this for me, would you please? So, when you talk to Leah, if she were to list your business and they went off the website, it didn't show, it was a, what did it show anything? Because if it doesn't show that, I'm not so sure why we'd even wanna go with them.
Right, I think we need somebody.
It's a commercial business.
Well, I, you know, and that was very frustrating for me.
Coming from, that, that would be very frustrating.
Yeah, and, um.
They, they look up the listing and there's nothing there.
I put it on Craigslist, three different spots on Craigslist last week, and I've had five calls, inquiries on it, and I think I'm about that close to.
For retirement?
Hold on, what you listed with, with Leah, did, did you say you have listed?
It's not listed.
Or it's not listed at all?
This was a recommendation from the EDA.
Right.
Holly, how does that work? So, I mean, is the council and Holly, are you thinking that most likely this is gonna be somebody from the outside? It's not gonna be a local business that's interested in this piece of property. So then it really comes down to having connections with maybe some businesses in the metro. And are there realtors, maybe who aren't from the area, who would have connections where they could get a lot of exposure to this property? And is that any different than us going with a local realtor, or just going with somebody who has more connections and can?
So the trade-off with, um, someone like an Edina Realty or someone like that, they may not know the local market as well, even though it, they might just not know the price point. If that were the, um, option, I would recommend going either with Fahey Realty out of, um, Northern America because of proximity, but they do work on commercial, or Randy Kubish out of New Prague, um, who does, does a lot of commercial properties, um, and is familiar with the area as well. So, those would be my two recommendations if we went to go, did not go with a local realtor.
Of those two, is there one be- better than the other?
Um, I would say, based on my experience, um, in Northern America, that Fahey Realty probably would know the market the best. Um, they list a number of commercial properties there, and have had pretty good success, so.
They also do some advertising on, you know, CCO, I hear Fahey.
Right, and then.
All the time.
No, it's the other Fahey that does on CCO.
Oh, is that right?
Advertiser auctions.
Oh, there's two separate.
There's the Glencoe and the Norwood Young America.
And Norwood Young America.
And just looking at their website, I mean, they got ten, fifteen businesses, oh, not quite that many. They got several businesses for sale and they're very easy to find, so, I mean, I, I would be in favor of going to somebody like that.
Well, I think it would increase our chance of moving the property.
And that's the goal.
Because they have the availability to get out there more. I got nothing against Bill or Leah at all.
Right.
But after you said what you did about her website, that, that kinda concerns, that, that concerns me a bunch.
Well, we're selling commercial property, I think it's just, we should go with the commercial, uh, realtor. So, do we need a?
We need a motion.
A motion to go with Fahey.
I think we should explore, get some ideas, whether we contact Fahey or, who's, who's the one in, um, New Prague?
Randy Kubish.
So what are we gonna gain by delaying it, I guess, is my point?
Well, I, I guess I'd wanna have, say, both of those take a look at the building, get an idea what they think it would sell for. You know, if one is here and one's there, then we gotta issue, you know, if one's here and one's here.
Yeah.
Yeah, then we got a good price point.
So, do you wanna get a proposal for bo- from both, um, commercial, um, realtors to see the terms they would offer to us?
Right. You know, if one is at five percent, the other's at seven percent, or nine, and what, you know?
I'll make that motion then.
A second motion.
Oh.
Thank you.
We had two seconds. Now, motion by Councilmember Batra. Motion by Councilmember Batra, second by Councilmember Hattlestead, to solicit proposals from, um, both Fahey, uh, realist, realtor, and what is the other one?
Um, Kubish.
Kubish, spelling please.
Um, K-U-B-E-S. If it was in order, it'd be Kubis.
Oh, yeah, but it is Kubis, huh? Um, from those two realty companies, and, um, hopefully that can be brought back at one of our December meetings.
Uh, Mayor and Councilors, all right, I'd like to bring this back to the EDA on December eleventh, just so they can be involved in the recommendation to the city council, but.
Okay, is that agreeable?
That pushes it back a month.
Yeah, so we're looking at January first of the year before we.
Well.
I like the idea, but yeah, it's another month.
Yeah.
Been a year.
Well, I mean, it's been sitting there for a year.
Maybe one is another.
We don't really have money invested in it.
No, we don't, and I think probably.
Well, yeah, we do, because we're paying for heat.
Well, heat, yeah.
Can you have a special meeting at all, Holly? Call a special meeting?
Um, we could. I still, with the Thanksgiving holiday, I still need to contact, um, Fahey and Kubish and have them come tour the building, so I'm just not sure if it's realistic to have it on the fourth, so.
So, when is your next EDA meeting?
On December eleventh.
Eleventh.
And then it could, or is there a council meeting on the eighteenth?
Yes.
So, we could have.
No, no, eight, is that eighteen? Yeah, eighteenth, I'm sorry, yes. So, have a, have an EDA input.
Correct.
Right now. Well, I think just to keep harmony among the committees and the council here, we need to respect their input also.
They what?
We need to respect their input, the input of the.
I understand that.
Yeah, so I think it would be a good idea to, to do it that way. Okay, uh, then the motion would be to, as I, as I stated, uh, solicit, uh, proposals from Fahey Realty, Kubish Realty, and then, uh, those proposals would go back to the EDA at the December eleventh meeting with the intent to, uh, have council action on December eighteenth. Any questions? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
I oppose, no. Motion carried. Okay.
The next item is, um, one that we've been discussing for a while now, and it was in front of the council earlier this year. Um, originally, the whole was to do a county-wide comprehensive housing study, um, but the county decided not to move forward at this time with that. So the communities that are still interested in completing a joint housing study include Arlington, Gaylord, Glentrop, and Gibbon. Um, so we did do another release for request proposals and received, um, two proposals. One from a company that recently did one for the city of Blenchel. And, um, we also received a grant from Compuer Financial to help offset the cost for that. So, tonight is requesting approval to move forward with the housing study at a cost of three thousand seven hundred and twenty dollars and fifty cents. Um, that is an increase over the three thousand dollars that the council previously approved.
Okay, open for discussion.
I have a question. I talked to Amy Newsom in regards to doing a housing study, what the cost would be, what would be involved. I didn't get into, I mean, a lot of depth, but the crux of it is, is that Amy had explained to me that with her help, and she figured that Roxy would help some, um, that the cost would be to Arlington, six to seven thousand dollars, but we could get a grant. Uh, it was either AgStar or whoever is AgStar now, I believe it was for up to three thousand dollars. So that would be, reduce that cost to three to four thousand dollars for the study. My reason for asking her was, I have concerns, I guess I would rather see Arlington do their housing study with Arlington putting all the input into that study, us being able to have all the contact. I, I have concerns doing this with Gaylord.
Yeah?
Because I didn't, and, maybe you can correct me if I'm wrong, cause I could be. I read a letter somewhere that stated that the only person, that the contact person for the housing study, uh, with this proposal would be Sue Kaitong. And nobody else could, it was her only.
Um, no, the, Sue is serving as sort of a chair right now as a contact, but all of us receive all the information in the emails, including whoever serves for the city of Arlington going forward. My concern of having the county do it is if we move to the next step, which is applying for funding from Minnesota Housing or any of those state agencies, they are going to be looking for someone that is knowledgeable in housing study specifically. So, when we met with Rick Goodman from South West Minnesota Housing Partnership, he strongly recommended the first step be a housing study by a consultant well versed in that.
But can't we, as the city of Arlington, also hire the same type person?
Yes, and the city did. In two thousand and six, the city had a housing study completed by community partners. Um, and based on my discussion with the former mayor, it was about sixty-five hundred dollars at that time. So I think, um, if we were to kind of go it alone, I would, um, Glencoe's, that was just done, was about eleven thousand. So I think we'd be in that ten to eleven thousand.
No, that's just the number Amy and Roxy came up with, six to seven thousand, less the grant funds.
But I, I don't understand if we did it on our own, what we would get less than what doing it combined? I mean, aren't they still gonna study each individual city separately, and, I mean, they're not gonna just do a big?
See, that's part I question. I question, is this study for everybody? Is, or is this study for Gaylord, for their medical school, required to move forward, so everybody's hopping in on the deal? I really question that. And I don't know that our concerns are really gonna be as dressed, as well as if we did it ourselves. Because if I go off Amy and Roxy's numbers, it's the same money. That's all I have to go off, is, is the numbers they quoted me.
Right, but I don't understand what we would get different. I mean, isn't a housing study a housing study, I mean?
Well, I guess my thought process in, in what you're saying there, Adam, is, is this, is, um, we know what we have available already. We have inventory that's done. We, we know the type of housing we need. We, I, I don't see a purpose. We have inventory that's done. We, we know the type of housing we need. We, I, I don't see a purpose for a housing study to begin with, so it's not really helpful in this, in this at all.
Right, so to go with what you said, the purpose would be to get a grant down the road.
However. Right, I, I understand that point, and for us, doing a housing study down the future to get a grant, we need one in place. But how far down the line are we gonna apply for a grant? When are we gonna move ahead with this? I mean, things kinda are slow, and they haven't progressed that, that way, um, to get us to a point where we're gonna apply for a grant for housing or anything like that? So, thirty-seven hundred dollars is a whole lot of money. I don't know.
You just spent four hundred and fifty dollars to write a letter for the trade.
I know. We already, but I mean, I guess my whole argument the whole time is, is that we have a very good handle, the city of Arlington, on how many open lots we have available within the already developed areas in town. We know the lots that we have, and we have a good number of lots that are not developed in developments. And, um, we might not have the infrastructure all around, but we know where that's going. We got planned developments. So, I think for the city of Arlington, we're sitting in a good place, knowing where we're at right now and where we're heading, without having to spend this money, and that's just my two cents.
The package is, the comprehensive part of the housing study means that it looks at the entire spectrum of housing. So, we, I think Arlington does have a good handle on single-family housing, but maybe less so on market rate rental or subsidized rental, or some of those other components that are all part of the housing mix, even senior housing. So, that's the thing that a comprehensive housing study will get, is all of that.
So, then once you have the study done, what do we have? We have thirty-seven hundred dollars less money in the kitty, and, um, we still don't have somebody knocking on the door wanting to build houses. And, um, like you said, we've got a lot of lots available, and, um, and we just need somebody to come and build houses.
Well, and, and I mean, it's not even a lot of lots. It's a lot of planned or proposed lots that have multifamily, multi, um, along with single families. So, I mean, it's a whole wide, maybe not that senior housing or anything like that, that you were specifically speaking of, but we do have multifamily, uh, uh, areas that are earmarked for, what, the thirty-two unit or the sixteen unit area, the, the twin home area, the single family area and such, so.
You know, in my neighborhood, we've got one area designated for fourteen townhomes, plus another six or eight lots, sewer, water, curb, gutter, street, streetlights, for ten thousand dollars.
That's dirty.
You go thirty miles east of here, that's a fifty thousand dollar lot. And, um, I don't understand it, you know, it drives me absolutely crazy. If I was, had a lot of money and more time, I would, I would buy that lot with the fourteen townhomes staked out in there and start building some senior housing. Two-bedroom, two-car garage. 'Cause we, you got everything right on that corner. You got the horse-riding arena? Oh, wait, that's not a plus.
You got the racetrack.
You got the racetrack, there's another plus.
I'm sure the elderly would love that.
You've got the church. The church, the hospital, and the nursing home.
Right.
All in one spot, you know, kabing, kabing, kaboom, you know.
The only thing questionable is the neighbors. I mean, that's.
Well, the neighbors, they have a lot of, they have a lot of junk in their yard. Sometime I'll tell you a cute story about that.
All right.
But not on the air. So anyhow, I'm, I'm with you, I, I just, I think we could probably do the study. That might cost us more money, but it would be ours.
Anyone else wish to speak?
I'm agreeing with, with the rest, um. We've, we've done it, or we've had it done, and I, I think it, we can wait to add more to it.
Holly, do you recall what came out of the two thousand and six study? Were there some different initiatives? Were?
Um, well, that was, I, I don't, and part of the reason you can't use that one anymore is just wholly different market conditions at that time. So, um, I don't remember specifically what came out of that housing study.
Was that part of the comprehensive plan that we were doing?
Yeah.
So, the hous- housing study was, study was part of the com- we had a comprehensive plan that we did citywide, uh, around that time. So, that was just one piece of that. And you should have that available. There's a big.
It's a huge three-ring binder.
A huge, five inches, I think.
Look for the biggest binder in your office and that's it.
Right, yeah.
Perfect for Saturday night.
That's right, yeah. It's a good read.
Yeah.
I'll give you a summary.
I already, I was there.
Um, I'd like to make a motion that we, uh, choose not to join in the comprehensive housing study with the other communities.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Highland, second by Councilmember Cowell to, um, not, uh, participate in the housing study with the other communities in the county. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries unanimously. Okay, next item.
So, my final item, um, that was also discussed.